Good afternoon. Today is our joint work session with Coconino County, and the date is October 16th, 2023. I am calling this meeting to order. Can we have roll call? Chairman Vasquez.
President, good afternoon, everyone.
Vice Chairwoman Begay.
Here.
Supervisor Horsman.
President, good afternoon.
Supervisor Ryan. Supervisor Fowler. Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Aslan.
President.
Vice Mayor, could you please test your mic again?
President.
Vice Mayor, you are pretty quiet. I'm going to turn up the room volume a little bit, but just be aware of that. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews. Councilmember McCarthy. And Councilmember Sweet.
Here. Moving down to three, Councilmember Sweet, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Would be my honor. Please stand if you are able. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember House, our mission statement.
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
And Councilmember Harris, would you read our land acknowledgement, please?
It is certainly my pleasure. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands still inhabited by native descendants border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. We have a public participation, which is where anyone from the public can address the council on anything that's not on tonight's agenda, and I do not see any public participation. All right, so let's get an update on the Flagstaff Regional Plan.
Well, good afternoon, Board of Supervisors and City Council Members. My name is Melissa Shaw, and I am Coconino County Long Range Planner. So I am kicking off this afternoon's presentation along with Sarah Decter, the city's Comprehensive Planning Manager. So for a change, you'll get me to kick this off. This is the graphic that shows the different phases of the Flagstaff Regional Plan update. And so, as you know, the city and county have been collaborating on this ever since the beginning, which started way back in 2022. And we are entering the end of Phase Two, where you see that red star. So we've been through getting organized, collecting a lot of data, creating some excitement around public art. We are now, we've actually gone into, beginning in fiscal year '23, we started with visioning, with many workshops and open houses. We've gone through a collaborative process, and we have started now to launch into the end of Phase Two, going into Phase Three with plan creation. And we're going to tell you a lot more detail in a moment about what that means and what we've done and where we are. Just to kind of refresh, and we'll talk about this a bit at the end of the presentation, about Phase Four, which is plan adoption, and get into some of the details on the timing of that and the schedule. And I just want to emphasize that, of course, underscoring each of these phases has been the public participation plan. So that has guided a lot of our outreach, plus we've made adjustments as we've gone on. There's a sidebar on the left there that talks about collaborate and empowerment. And this is interesting because the city actually has different levels of public participation written into their code. And so this is just kind of showing for the county adoption, it's more of a collaborative effort. And then for the city adoption, they are striving for an empowerment level of public participation. And these bullet points here are lessons learned from the existing Flagstaff Regional Plan. So when Sarah came on board, and she can answer more questions about this, but she interviewed people that were involved with the current regional plan and asked what went right, what went wrong, what could be improved. And then these are some of the go-to points that she learned from those interviews. So one of those is talking to the right people at the right time and creating the right agenda for moving this plan forward, bringing experts and the public together throughout the whole process, and the need for outside facilitation to bring in outside consultants to really be a neutral voice and to bring in some information that seems to be more neutral to the process. And then obviously, equity and inclusion is something that we have worked hard at throughout this whole process to make sure we're bringing in voices that are normally not involved in these processes. And then we are setting forward, and we'll be talking about that more this evening, about clear expectations for final endorsement. So with that, I'm going to hand this back over to Sarah, and she's going to get into some of the details about what we've been doing with the scenario planning process.
Hello. If you will all remember, back when we spoke in the spring, we talked more about the scenario planning workshops that we had with the community and the fact that we were about to take all that information and run it through a lot of computer modeling and get a little more feedback and come back to the public for another set of workshops this fall. So that has been our goal. We pushed back a little bit just due to making sure we get everything right in terms of timing and the information we're sharing. But we are still on a path to take the growth ideas, which are what came out of the Face the Future Flagstaff Workshops in March, which were those ones that were gamified, where people could talk about where growth and investment could happen across the region in the future, and a series of growth principles, which is a survey we did in the early summer, where we asked people the underlying principles behind why we were making the decisions we did in the workshops. How would those be prioritized by the public? And how would they look at them, just as guiding principles for the work? So those two things were pulled together and shared with the public again in July in a set of open houses. We had one at City Hall, one online, and then one specifically hosted with the League of Neighborhoods to meet in the Sunnyside area, but also with Southside and Plaza Vieja residents. So those were really a touch point to share information. And once we finished those meetings, we have been deep in the analysis process. So we've had workshops with staff to talk about the disposition of different parts of the community in terms of infrastructure and the realities, so that we can really ground truth what we're coming forward with. And what we hope to see the first draft of in about four weeks that goes out to the public is a narrative, a map, and a set of performance metrics about the different scenarios we developed through this process. I do have a map to share today, but the other things are still being refined, both by the city and the county, and our consultant, and Metro Plan is also participating with some transportation modeling as well. So long ago, we decided that the baseline for comparison would not be the way Flagstaff looks today, but the way Flagstaff would look in 20 years if we just kept doing the things we're comfortable and already have decided to do. So we didn't make any big policy shifts. We didn't rezone any more property. We just stayed on the path we're on, and let's see what happens in modeling. And that is called the business-as-usual scenario, and this is a rough approximation of what that looks like in our community. The development pattern and growth tended to still be pretty low density and single-family in this scenario. We just ran out of places to put denser development unless we had real efforts to consolidate properties. And then the new jobs were modeled to occur in Belmont and around the airport and Fort Tuthill area. This led to some rough, the bar at the bottom of the screen is a rough approximation, and it'll be used to compare the different alternatives of how much of the growth projected for the region was modeled in different places and different alternatives. So business-as-usual kind of looks like this. This is what our development has looked like for the last 10 years, and it's what it will look like if we kept doing it for another 20. The first scenario we built out of that workshop material is a moderate growth scenario for greenfield development. It really talks about completing our rural and suburban activity centers. People had a whole variety of reasons. Either they didn't want what's currently built in Flagstaff to change, or they wanted to see the Flagstaff area providing more services to the general region, or they wanted to see if greenfield development could be used to meet our affordable housing objectives, and if speeding up our greenfield development would help us in that direction. Some of those outcomes are still being looked at and analyzed, but this is basically how the inputs have gone into the model. And you can see that under this scenario, we were able to find more places to build activity centers and had a little less new growth in urban activity centers and a little less in some other areas. So this is the first attempt to kind of shift what business-as-usual looks like into a scenario that the public helped us build through those workshops and surveys. The second responsive scenario that came from the public is one that really focused on urban centers and corridors, like the downtown and our major commercial corridors like Milton and Route 66. This more concentrated development was favored by some of the participants because of the improvements it had for sustainability and transit service and supporting walking and biking in the community. We still have some modeled growth in our activity centers that are rural and suburban, but it's more limited because the scenarios are not meant to be an all or nothing, but something realistic that could occur if we had different policies in place and different practices than we do today. So the fourth scenario overall, and the third that's really responsive to that public input, is a slightly different version of infill development. The scenario C, urban centers and corridors, really focused on kind of lowest physical footprint on the ground, but getting the most density and intensity out of our central places. The neighborhood infill scenario concentrated more on adding units where we have existing residential areas, making it easier to build accessory dwelling units, duplexes, townhomes, quads and triplexes in existing areas as a way of expanding housing options. So we're not just choosing apartments or single-family homes as the only options in the region, but giving a greater breadth of options and hopefully also increasing affordability in the region. So in our next step that we go to with the public, we will bring them these scenarios and a report card that says, here's how this actually performs. This is your idea. What does it actually do in 20 years? Does it do something different than we expect? So we don't walk into this with the expectation, some of these scenarios may look different on the map, but not produce very different outcomes from what we see in the models. However, that's useful information. If it's not a big enough change, we need to think about why and understand what that means. And so that's kind of the step we are in, right before we go back out to the public with these, giving them new information. Staff has been reviewing fiscal parameters of the model, infrastructure parameters. We've been reviewing the land base assumptions about zoning and other kinds of criteria about what people can do with property in the region, as well as flooding and other issues, and making sure that all of that input, which is being modeled by our Cascadia Partners, who's our consultant, is accurate to what we know about the community today. So are there any questions about the modeling part of it before I go to the community engagement side? This seems like a good place to transition and pause, if you'd like me to. Will do. So on the community side of this, that's what it's looked like from staff's side, what you just saw on those last four slides. From the community side, our technical advisory group has continued to meet through the summer, and they will be having their last two meetings next week. So on the 24th and the 25th, they're going to have two one-hour meetings that help them wrap up their input into the scenario planning process. And they'll be the first group that will get to see the draft metrics and the draft narrative and help us talk about how we contextualize what we're learning in the scenario planning process. Their last meeting is that. They were convened to help us with technical aspects of scenario planning. The Regional Plan Committee, which we'll talk about a little more, will pick up that work within a few weeks, which will be a new group, which has a new purpose. You know, this is our right meeting, right agenda, right timing principle at work here. And they will be listening in to the public engagement and getting started on the work of actually helping us revise and review the policies.
Sarah?
I have a quick question about that. Do you think that this committee will always meet on Tuesdays? Is there a set day of the week and frequency that they'll be meeting?
There is not a set day of the week right now. I sent out a poll to all the committee members, which on a future slide, you'll see who's on it. And there wasn't a single day of the week that worked for everyone. It's a bigger group. It's 24 people, so it's much harder to get a consistent date. So I picked kind of what looked like the best days for staff. And right now, Tuesdays and Wednesdays both seem to be pretty good for most of the committee. Wednesdays are difficult for planning staff because the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month, we have planning and zoning, and then Heritage Preservation Commission meets on a different Wednesday of the month. So we're hoping to find a way to kind of balance that. But right now, it's leaning more heavily Tuesday. But our December meeting is going to be a Wednesday meeting. But we will publish the whole schedule to the website. Right now, I've scheduled the first three meetings, and once we kind of get to the second meeting, we're going to work on figuring out how to schedule the rest.
Thank you. And they'll be open to the public?
Yes, they will be open to the public, and they will be available both in person and on Zoom.
And in the evening, you think?
Right now, they're all scheduled for the evening.
Thank you.
Other questions on that, or should I keep going? Okay. So other touch points with more general public people who've not been invited specifically to the committee or the tag will include a survey that will be the way we gather a lot of the scenario choosing input that will open November 16th as our target date, and then two public open houses to help line people up with the survey and also to gather other questions and input as we are reflecting on what the narrative, the map, and the performance metrics tell us. Another way we're gathering input during this period in the winter is working with our community-based organizations, which we've included a memo about how that program works. Already, it's yielded a fully Spanish workshop that we had in the spring, and we're working for another in the winter, where our delighted translator gets to translate English to Spanish for the participants. And we've had very meaningful youth engagement, especially with the Native American Clubs of Flagstaff and Coconino High School, so much so that they are planning to convene a meeting of their design for indigenous people in the region. And they are working, vector meeting on Thursday again, to talk through their list of invitees and the formats they're hoping to use to solicit input of all kinds on this process. We've also had meetings with the neighborhood associations, both in helping us plan what to do next and hearing feedback on what maybe we did that wasn't as well received, which we're very open to. And we've also had meetings in a transitional housing setting at A New Living, which was also very interesting because it was a lot of people who really work in our grocery stores and are reliant on public transportation and have the kind of jobs that keep them from easily finding their way from the postcard in the mail or the notice in the paper to the kind of free time it takes to show up at a public meeting at a central location. And so all of these have really provided us with great opportunities to make relationships in these communities and also to gather who's really excited about this process. So in the next phase of what we're doing, we're continuing with those kinds of meetings, but also going to be offering an ambassador orientation for members of our community-based organizations that want to be able to speak to others about the process and help encourage their peers and coworkers and friends to come participate as well. And so that is how we're taking our CBO investment in time and relationship with these organizations and turning it into outreach that wouldn't be done by normal advertising means. And also providing really unique impact that I think is, even though maybe only one person at a Spanish-speaking workshop talked about a topic, they're really speaking for a lot of their neighbors and colleagues and friends who don't have the time to make it to the meeting or don't have the relationship that made it possible for them to be there. So we're really proud of how the CBO process is working so far. We know it's the first time we've kind of approached planning updates this way. We've learned a lot. It's not all been perfect. And so we accept that that's just a step in the direction we want to be going. So before we talk about Phase Four and adoption overall, I want to thank all of the members of our technical advisory group, whose names I've put up so that I wouldn't spend a lot of time reading them off. But each of these individuals have brought their professional and personal knowledge of the community to help make the scenarios that we're building more reflective of people's lived experiences and of the real technical realities of many of the elements we're trying to talk about. Transportation, water, and housing in particular have been very well represented in these tag conversations. And so it's been really great, and we've been really pleased with all of the participation. The committee members coming on board, you may notice a few of the tag members are also coming forward and have been appointed to the committee. This committee, of course, was formed by the nominations that were made by the Board of Supervisors and City Council. And then this summer, we prepared, we asked all the individuals who you had mentioned for letters of interest, so they'd have an opportunity to tell us a little more about them. And we sent those on to the city and county manager, who helped develop this list and make these appointments. With that, I'm going to hand it back to Melissa to talk about the key milestones of Phase Four.
Thank you, Sarah. So at this point, then, we were talking about some of the, you'll see on the left, some of the initial schedule that we have set up with the committee. And I think maybe it will be helpful to look at that first. So we anticipate that they'll meet starting in November, all the way through into August of 2024. So there's a commitment from the committee members to attend these lengthy meetings, and they will be doing a lot of review of actual written drafts, as well as goals and policies. There'll be a 60-day public review, which is required by statute. They will reconvene in January, February, we're talking all the way up to 2025 at this point, where they'll be reviewing public comments that were received during that 60-day review. So the first meeting will entail the committee talking about their rules and procedures, their operating principles, that sort of thing. They'll look at another one of their key milestones, actually, and key tasks will be to review the scenario choosing and then going through all the public input that we receive from that and ultimately making a recommendation of a preferred scenario. So if you think back to the maps that Sarah showed you with the different spread of development, if you will, that's what they'll be, they're making a final recommendation to you, the City Council, and the Board of Supervisors on. There will, along with that, then, be a final land use framework and a growth illustration, which is similar to the map that you see in the current Flagstaff Regional Plan. They'll be reviewing the written chapters, and they'll, when they reconvene after reviewing all of the public comments, then they'll be endorsing a final draft for public review and then incorporating the public comments. So you can see throughout the process the commitment that will be required from this extensive committee. So we already are very grateful for their willingness to participate in this process. And I guess, well, the next slide is about the schedule, but are there any questions at this point about the committee and what they will be tasked with doing? Okay, go forward then. And so this is the schedule that we have been, that has been outlined in the Public Participation Plan and that we've been striving for all along. So this is a heads-up for all of you, because we anticipate in March of 2025, then having that public draft ready for you to start reviewing. And what we're anticipating is scheduling a retreat, which would be a joint retreat of city and county planning and zoning commissioners, as well as Board of Supervisors and City Council, so that you can all listen together, talk to each other together, have discussions about the draft and the goals and policies, instead of breaking it up into individual meetings that are stretched out over a number of weeks. So this, again, could be a fairly intensive retreat time, but it seemed when we were putting together the Public Participation Plan, this might be a very good strategy. So it's all in, presented at once, and then we can hopefully answer questions. The April 2025 bullet point on here, the citizen review sessions with Planning and Zoning Commission, that's specific to the city. It's in the city code. It's a city requirement. And we're thinking that this specific requirement for citizen review sessions with the Planning and Zoning Commission could be tacked on to this intense retreat schedule that we're putting together. So that's something that I think, and Sarah might have more to add about that, that could be up for discussion in terms of whether or not, we would think this would meet the city code requirements to have this special citizen review session. But just to let you know that there is that specific requirement that we do need to meet. We're looking, then, in May to June of 2025, public hearings with the City of Flagstaff on the draft. So the reason for this is the City of Flagstaff, if you all remember, needs to have this plan packaged and ready for a ballot initiative in November of 2025. So City Council will need to review this and take it through public hearings in that May and June of 2025 timeframe. What we have talked about and what we proposed in the Public Participation Plan is that it go through the city adoption process before it comes to the county Board of Supervisors. So, and also this, the county Planning and Zoning Commission. So what we're looking at right now is in November of 2025, going into January of 2026, starting with the county Planning and Zoning Commission, beginning our public hearings with county planning and zoning in November of 2025. And then because of our timing, it would likely get to the Board of Supervisors in that January of 2026. So are there any questions about the schedule before we go on?
Yeah, I was curious. Can you elaborate a little bit more on the ballot initiative?
I'm going to actually let Sarah speak to that, but that is a requirement by Arizona revised statutes, and it's a very important distinction between how cities and towns must send their general plan for adoption versus counties, which do not have that very specific state statutory requirement. Did you want to add anything to that?
Sure. So Melissa's right. Cities, over 50,000 people in Arizona have to, can not only, what happens is the City Council actually refers the regional plan or the general plan, in this case, we're together, so we called a regional one, to the ballot. And then it goes for a yes or no vote, just like the charter amendments are this year with the city. In the past, it's often been done out of sequence with the November election and done in May and as a mail-in ballot. But this timeline that we've looked at and our ability to get it to the voters in May just doesn't look reasonable once you get the committee involved, and they're going to want to be able to spend time with the material and weigh in on it. And you put in the 60-day public review, which is another requirement that just becomes not very reasonable to do. I think, as Melissa said, the citizen review session is actually a city Title 11 requirement, not a requirement of the state statute. So we have some flexibility on when that could be scheduled, as long as we meet all of our internal requirements for the code, which is why we've said if we wanted to bump some of this up, it doesn't move us past November. But if we wanted to kind of have a little more legroom in here for things to go wrong or things to move better, we might combine the citizen review session with the March retreat and have it be, our imagining was that it would be something like have the day or two retreat, and then that evening have a special meeting of the city Planning and Zoning Commission to meet that requirement that we've set.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And my next question is, and I know we're not going to get there because we're going to do such a great job to sell this to the community, but in the event that that ballot initiative fails, does that plan still come to the county? Or does it stop and now have to go back to the drawing board before the county can adopt a regional plan?
Well, we are the only city in Arizona that does a joint city-county plan. So some of this answer is from the experience of other cities. Other cities have, when they've had a no vote on their general plan, and I'm specifically thinking of Scottsdale, continued to use the plan they had for their procedures, and they've kind of started all over again. If the county is working on it with us, then I think if we were to have a no vote on the ballot initiative, ballot initiative in November, or whenever it is, we would have to bring back a joint meeting and decide, does the county want to take this plan and do something different with it separately and the city start over? But we, yeah, we'd be at a renegotiating, reconsidering step. Flagstaff has always been able to get its general plans approved because we do such extensive public engagement, and we don't try and rush the process. The statutory requirement actually for all of these is, of course, is always to get them done in 10 years. But we've taken a little extra time, and I think it's benefited us to have very high pass rates and make sure we've really had, engaged the community in what's going on. So, yeah, our goal is to do so much public engagement that people think I've had a chance to weigh in. I can see my comments were considered, and by the time we're at the ballot, they're, they're excited to see us moving to, to implement the vision.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
And real quick, Sterling had a comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, Mr. Chair and Board. Just one quick clarification. The terms ballot initiative and ballot measure often get interchanged. Just want to make sure everyone understands that council doesn't refer ballot initiatives to the ballot. They refer ballot questions or ballot measures. The voters are the ones that drive a ballot initiative. Just want to make sure. I know that's in the slide, and I should have caught that sooner, and that's on me. Just want to make sure the public and you all are aware that that's the proper terminology. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. We just have one final slide unless there are further questions about the adoption schedule. And of course, this is a somewhat self-serving plug for the county's comprehensive plan update, because we are, and I'm sorry, did you, was there a question?
Councilmember House has a question.
I'm by apologies.
No problem. Can you just go back to that prior slide? I just wanted a little bit more clarification on that citizen review sessions point. And Sarah, maybe if you can explain a little bit more on what that requirement fully is, because just reading the name, it looks like it's, is it a requirement for multiple sessions? And so if we were condensing it, would that require then multiple retreats? Or is it just a call for a session for citizen review?
It is typically a call for a session for citizen review. Councilmember House, I'm pulling up my email right now so I can look at the language, because we were actually emailing back and forth about this today to make sure we knew what was required, because it comes from Title 11. And it's basically, there's a sentence in Title 11 that says comprehensive updates to the general plan have to meet all the procedural requirements in the common procedure section of Title 11, which probably sounds a little circuitous, because it is. And that section, then, has this requirement that the Planning and Zoning Commission hold a citizen review session. It kind of is a place, it is in place of what, if you were looking at a zoning case, would be a neighborhood meeting. It's, you know, if we were doing the minimum, that would be a really important meeting, and people would need that opportunity to really look at everything together. And that's kind of the point of it, is it's a, it's a public meeting that's held instead of in a neighborhood setting at this Planning and Zoning Commission, and then they start the public hearings. And there's some timing requirements that go with it as well. So it is a requirement we made for ourselves. And it's very useful when the public engagement is more minimal. It can be a really critical time for engagement. We, however, are doing a lot more than the minimum to arrive at having a new general plan. And so staff's pretty comfortable that if, as long as we can make the timing requirements in Title 11, having it coincident, or at least concurrent with the days of the retreat, could buy us a few extra weeks and probably save everyone reading a very, very minutely but similar packet time after time, which tends to be, I think, the difficulty that the public has too, when we have all these sequential meetings, is like, the work session packets are a little different than the public hearing one packet, which is a little different than the public hearing two packet. And it's just a lot of material for everybody, both to prepare and absorb. So that's kind of why we think this might be a good place to condense without actually missing a step.
Have to keep it down. Okay.
I'm the only one.
Oh, well, you know, it pays to be mayor. That's all I can say. So, and by the way, thank you very much. This is really great. And, and I just want to also express the great appreciation, really, once again, with the city of Flagstaff in partnership with Coquigno County. I think it does not make any sense, when you think about it, that, you know, the major cities within a county does not participate. And it's wonderful that we have already well-established partnership and collaboration with regards to that. And as you know, we got the, city gets a general plan, and then we, the board, will amend it to the Coquigno County Comprehensive Plan. And I think it really provides a roadmap to all of our residents. And I'm just very pleased to see the planning that's been going on. And I want to thank you very much for both the city and the county's efforts on this. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. We did have one more, one more point to bring up, and that does tie right into Supervisor Horstman's comments. And that is about the county's comprehensive plan update, because we are in basically the Phase One of that update. So where we were with the Flagstaff Regional Plan a couple of years ago, that's where we are with our comprehensive plan. So we are working together with city staff so that we can, we're trying to coordinate meetings and, and the schedule as best as possible, because there is some overlap potentially in, in timing. We are, we have planned right now that our public review and our public adoption process for the comprehensive plan would also be in late 2025. So we'll be working closely with city staff. So we make sure there is not any conflicting meetings, that you're not trying to approve both on the same agenda, because we do know that there is definitely the risk of confusion about the two different planning processes. So we just wanted to mention that, and we'll continue to coordinate as both processes move along. The county's comprehensive plan was adopted in 2015, so following similar statutory requirements to update it every 10 years. That's why we're choosing to do it now. It's not that we would, we'd rather not have the overlap, but we are working as best we can to avoid any confusion. And it's just also interesting to note that the, the title that Sarah was quoting from city code is also Title 11, which guides comprehensive plan updates from state statutes. So that's just another point of clarification. So thank you very much, everybody. We're happy to answer further questions.
Thank you. Do we have? Go ahead.
Thank you, Council, Mayor. I'm sorry. But I just want to thank you and also the tag members and the Regional Plan Committee, you know, for really making the effort, plus in developing this, other committee members like the, that are helping, and also staff on both sides of the city and the county. I think it's very important, you know, that we work together in a lot of these efforts, so that we know, because we serve the same kind, the same areas within Coquigno County, and we're fortunate enough to have people come through, you know, with their, with their plans and stuff like that, and that we both take a look at it, you know, and we could use it, you know, however way. And I think that's a big plus, you know, for all the communities here within Coquigno County. So Melissa, thank you so much. And Sarah, thank you so much. I know, you know, you've gone and really took the community involvement seriously. I have just walked in in one of the meetings that you were having, and I kind of was out of place, but, you know, meaning that, you know, I didn't want anyone to hold back any kind of comments that are, that they want to say and not use choice words, you know, to, to develop this plan. So, so I just want to say thank you so much, you know, and the council, Mayor, the council, city, my colleagues, thank you so much, and, and administration too. So that's all I have to say.
Any other comments or questions? Council, county? All right. You did such a great presentation that we have nothing more to say. All right. Informational items to, from chair, supervisors, county manager, mayor, council, and city manager. This is something that is always on our agenda, and it's just if there is some information that you would like to share with each other. I am going to start down here with Councilmember House. Do you have anything to share?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Supervisor Bagay?
We have a lot to share, but I'll turn the floor over to Hironimo. Yes, basically, you know, we have a lot of things going on within our, within, within our meetings, you know, plans, and, you know, just really putting the, looking at things. And, and I'm really thankful again, you know, because I think the county is really proactive in a lot of areas that they're, they're, they're planning together on. So that, that's what I wanted to share. But this envisioned 2045 is one of them. I think, you know, it really means a lot, you know, for the community. So, and there are other areas. So I'll just go ahead and have the other two mention some of them. But that's the one that I, I think we really, you know, are, are working on together. And I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Yes, I do have a little bit to share. So this morning, eight o'clock, I was on a Zoom call with NAU Administration, as well as their Black Student Union. And for some of you who have lived in the community for a long time, you also know that the Black Student Union has always sponsored a Martin Luther King program. And so over the last several years, the program has kind of dwindled. But we have a new group of students. They're very engaged. They're starting to plan, and they're reaching out to the community to ask for the support. The plan is to really make this a big MLK 2024. They want everyone involved doing service, being a part of the program. It will be held on the NAU campus, and they will be working on all the parking issues and all of that stuff. And so they will be reaching out to the County Board of Supervisors, as well as to the city of Flagstaff for support. And so I ask people to really, really think about how we can get behind the students and make this a good event for them, as well as our community. In case you don't know, this is really the only program MLK's, MLK celebration north of Phoenix. So we're it. And the students have been doing this program for almost 40 years. And I think that warrants us to congratulate them and to support them for keeping this tradition alive. And so you will hear more from me on this particular topic as they continue their planning. So thank you.
Supervisor Horstman?
Yes, thank you. And thanks for that update. So that's exciting news. Yes, as many of you know, and many of you have been involved with rural groundwater management. The governor has appointed the Groundwater Advisory Council for the purpose of giving advice on the redrafting or amendments to the 1980 groundwater law, which would allow us here in Coquigno County and other rural counties to have some management and control over our local groundwater. I know that the governor continues to work hard on that. There was some bad news, as you probably saw the other day, about a couple of people who decided that they no longer wanted to be a part of that, and that's disappointing. I know she will have it in December, and I'm sure she'll be reaching out to those of us who live in the rural counties for additional input. We are, however, going to have a groundwater networking lunch here in Flagstaff on October 25. And it is going to be a lunch that will be provided. And it is going to be, doors open at 11:15. It starts at 11:30. We expect to be over by 1. It is being put on by the Southwest Audubon Society, who's put together, I think, an excellent panel to discuss rural groundwater and rural groundwater management. So I just wanted to invite everybody to that. It should be a very good event, and hope to see you there. So thank you.
Did you reference where that was?
Oh, I didn't, but I shall. Sorry. It is going to be at the Aspen Room, which is at 223 East 7th Avenue, Suite C, which is in the East Flagstaff area. So, thank you.
I am going to hop online to Vice Mayor Aslan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Supervisor Horstman. I believe that's the same at the exact same time as the first responders luncheon, so I'm already committed to that. But I appreciate you sharing that up. I don't have anything for today, as I'm on the road, but looking forward to the many joint conversations we have together. I think there's a lot of greatness that comes out of us knocking our heads together. Looking forward to more conversations.
Yeah, hello. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. I've been listening in on the meeting. Thank you for, I'm, I'm really happy that we're meeting again, the city and the county. We haven't had it for a while. I wish I was there in person, but we have our broadband meeting that we're, we're conducting out in Farmington. And so that's where I am. But we also have another session in Page that I'm going to right now. But I just want to let everyone know that we have our Western Navajo Fair coming up. So you're all invited to Tubus City. It'll be the last fair on Navajo Nation. We go from Winderock to, well, it starts from Eastern Navajo, Winderock, Shebrock, and then Tubus City. So that will be on October, the weekend of the 20th. So just want to let you all know that. And then we have the balloon regatta for Page, which will be on the first weekend in November. So this year, we're not, we did not have, and we're not going to have the, well, we may have one, but we didn't have the star party at the Navajo Bridge, which we usually have because of the eclipse that had just taken place. So I just want to just announce those and just, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Chair, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I'll start off with kind of announcing, if you haven't read a newspaper already, one of our colleagues has announced that he's retiring after 27 years of service. I'd just like to put a shout out and recognize Supervisor Matt Ryan for his 27 years of service to the county, and wish him well in his retirement. We will be going through the process of looking for an appointment, but we cannot do an appointment until January, after he has actually vacated the office. So more information will be coming out soon, but I just wanted to recognize Supervisor Ryan, and also mention the fact that we will be going through that appointment process over the next couple of months to replace him for the end of his term, which will be for 2024, from January until the election. So that was the main point. I did also want to just mention that I will be attending this week the Rural Transportation Advisory Council's Summit down in Yuma. And as the elected official representative for Metro Plan, I will be presenting to the state legislatures who are in attendance at this conference about the Lawn Tree Corridor Project and requesting additional funding to help that project. So that will be later this week. And then the final thing I just wanted to mention is that they will be having an Indigenous Peoples' Day event on Saturday, this Saturday, October 21, from 12 to 4 at the Ice House. And it is also the weekend for the Celebración de la Gente at the Museum in Northern Arizona. I believe it starts at 10, maybe 9, but that'll be on Saturday and Sunday. I mentioned those both events because the county is helping with sponsorship with those events. And so we're really excited to see those cultural events happen in our community. So with that said, thank you very much. Appreciate the meeting. Appreciate the opportunity to hear the update on the, the plan, both regional plan and the Greater Flagstaff Plan, and look forward to seeing the process continue. Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to give another thanks to staff, both city and county staff, for how well you work together, and for all of the outreach that you've done around the regional plan. I, too, am grateful that the city and the county have such a strong relationship, we meet pretty regularly, you know, different members of us, and we're always talking, and I appreciate that very much, and I appreciate that staff does the same. So, county manager, do you have anything you would like to add? City manager?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I don't see any public participation, so we are adjourned.